I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Noblesville Common Council on January 11th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Peterson, would you please lead us?
Thank you. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shirley, would you please make the roll call?
Mr. Air? Mr. Voice?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. O'Connor? Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
Mr. Sparks?
Here.
Ms. Wiles?
Present.
Madam President, you have a call.
Wonderful. Moving on, may I have the approval of the Executive Session Memorandum from December 21st, 2021?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven to zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from December 21st?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Moving on. A move of approval of minutes from January 4th, 2022.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous? Moving on to the approval of the agenda.
Madam President, move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving the agenda? Raise your right hand. Unanimous? Next is petitions or comments by citizens who are present. I do not have any of these slips, but if anyone would like to make a comment, please fill out one of those slips and then bring it up to Mrs. Cummins. We will move on to council committee reports. The first one would be the Roads Committee. Mr. Sparks?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. The Road Committee's met on January 7th and a lot of things, there's a lot of stuff on the list, but I'll just give a quick rundown of a few of them in another day. If anybody wants a copy, we can get you a copy. 146th Street, the lighting is removable. The existing light poles are expected at any time. Installing new light poles will begin in March of '22. End dot projects, 37 and 126th Street through 146th Street, 126th Street interchange is open to traffic and substantially complete. 146th Street interchange construction is ongoing. Traffic restrictions are ongoing for Harriman Boulevard North to 146th Street. Completion is expected in summer of '22. And 131st, 135th Street, construction is underway and expected completion in summer of '22 as well. 32, okay, the roundabouts on 32 and River Road and West 32 is split. The contract was awarded for Calumet City Contractors. Two-week closure of River Avenue expect immediately south of State Road 32 is planned on or after January 24th, this year, obviously, to install storage. I don't do this every day. Let's see, utility work is ongoing through 21. And the construction of 38, 32 roundabout is expected in '22. Expected in 2022. Bowden Road, Bowden Road and 146th Street Roundabout, design bids were opened on October 26, '21. Construction contract will be awarded to E&amp;B Paving. On-site earthwork was completed in December to prepare for utility relocation in February of '22. Bowden Road will remain open, utilizing temporary signs. 156th Street will be closed up to 90 days during the construction. The project must be completed by July 30th. So that's about it. And if anybody wants a copy of the full report, that's...
He brought up mine. He brought up streetlights. That's all we care about.
Thank you, Mr. Sparks. Moving on to the Finance Committee. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam President. We met January 6th. Greg O'Connor, Darren Peterson, Aaron Smith, and myself, Sam Bearsen, Matt Light, discussed fiscal action for 2022 citywide pay adjustments. They also discussed fiscal action for longevity pay increases for sworn public safety officer. Mr. Spalding discussed authorization for routine and year-end fiscal administration for 2022, and also authorization to appropriate grant proceeds in 2022. And the claims docket come to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Davis? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the claims as presented?
I have removed to approve claims as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven to zero? Terrific. Thank you. We will move on to previously discussed ordinances. Council to consider ordinance number 87-12-21 and ordinance amending ordinance number 17-04-21, authorizing the city to issue its taxable economic development revenue bonds, Series 2021A, the East River Partners LLC project, and taxable junior economic development revenue bonds, Series 2021B, East Bank project, and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto. Mr. Murray?
Thank you, President Wiles. Members of council, Andrew Murray, Economic Development Director, for the record. This side on this ordinance is second reading. As a quick refresher, this is just a technical cleanup to amend a previously approved bond ordinance for the East Bank project specifically to allow the maximum bond term of 25 years for the incentive in that partnership with J.C. Hart and Republic Development. So since your last meeting, I've received no comments. There have been no changes to the ordinance as presented, and I would request approval of this ordinance this evening. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Murray? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance.
I would move we approve ordinance 87-12-21. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Voice?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you very much. Moving on, council to consider ordinance 88-12-21, an ordinance annexing approximately 46 acres adjacent to the northwest intersection of East 146th Street and River Road. Joyce and Yelton.
Good evening. As you may recall, this item was before your last meeting. You also at that time approved a fiscal plan for this property. It does contain approximately 46 acres, and it is again a request to be annexed into the city limits.
Any questions for Mrs. Yelton? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
I move to approve ordinance number 88-12-21. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Mr. Voice?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you very much. Moving on to miscellaneous item number one. Council to consider resolution RC-1-22, a resolution authorizing routine budget adjustments and year-end fiscal administration. Mr. Spalding?
Madam President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, CFO and controller. And first for context, this is now another annual renewal of a process that we've been doing for the past couple of years. And what it's doing is it's really hitting at the crux of ensuring that the city is complying to the letter of the law, making sure the council has the proper oversight, but still trying to administer the finances of the city in as efficient a way as possible. And so what this is basically saying is that the council is authorizing me in my capacity as controller to do a couple of things. One, to make fiscally neutral, essentially technical budget transfers throughout the year that, you know, don't represent a significant change in policy or approach or what have you. And then, secondly, at year end, when it's time to do the year-end accounting closeout, to also, again, make such changes as are necessary. And in all cases, the resolution also requires that whatever action is taken is reported back to the council on a periodic basis. So it's fully, completely transparent. And essentially what it's doing is eliminating a series of recurring technical minor matters being brought up, you know, throughout the year and basically bundling them and grouping them into more consumable chunks. So with that, I'll answer any other questions.
Any questions for Mr. Spalding? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve resolution RC-1-22. I'll approve that. Or I'll second that, sorry.
It's been moved and seconded. Resolution RC-1-22. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next item is council to consider resolution RC-2-22, a resolution authorizing the appropriation of grant proceeds in 2022. Mr. Spalding?
Thank you. I won't introduce myself again. And this resolution, very similar in concept, but kept as a separate resolution because it's kind of functionally different. This is, again, the authorization for my office to administer something financial that's mostly a technical matter. And that is, at times, and from time to time, the city may receive proceeds from a grant where the use of the grant funds are tightly defined by the terms of the grant. And while technically the council has to appropriate those funds, what this is saying is that I can make the necessary budget adjustments to accommodate that, to allow the departments to use the funds. Again, still with a reporting back to you periodically what has been done, but it's not really taking any discretion out of the hands of the council because the grant's defining the use of the funds. And I'll answer any other questions.
Any questions for Mr. Spalding? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I would move to approve resolution RC-2-22. I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, council to consider resolution RC-3-22, a resolution for property disposal pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-11-8.
Thank you, council. Good evening. The purpose of this resolution tonight is basically to set out terms and conditions of a transfer of a parking lot from the city to the county. Indiana Code does allow governmental entities to transfer property between themselves upon terms and conditions agreed upon by those entities, as evidenced by adoption of substantially identical resolutions. The county commissioners did adopt a resolution that's identical to the one before you tonight, with one caveat. The one that was submitted previously, they did add one sentence to that, and I will get to that in just a minute. But just to make you aware, if you looked at the agenda maybe yesterday, that new version is now in its place. So nothing was deleted. There was an addition. So as you know, the city currently owns a parking lot located by the courthouse called the Red Lot. The county used to own another parking lot on the other side of the courthouse named the Connor Street Parking Lot. The county used that parking lot for its employees and visitors and sold it to a developer for what's now known as the East Bank Project. The East Bank Project is an economic development project for the city, and it will create jobs and increase assessed value of that property over there. The county is currently building a garage to provide parking for its employees and visitors, and they approached the city to see if we would be willing to maybe transfer that Red Lot to them so that they would have parking during construction, as well as have some additional parking close by after the construction of the garage is completed. Just some items of note on this agreement or on the resolution. Once the parking garage is completed in the summer of 2022, the garage will be available to the general public after 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and on Saturdays, Sundays, and on holidays. They are not going to permit overnight parking. And then, another, the city and the county also agreed to negotiate to allow some additional spaces within the parking garage to be used by the public, upon terms that are acceptable at that time. And this is where the new language came in from the county commissioner meeting yesterday. They wanted to add in that that agreement shall provide that the county may subsequently restrict public use of the county parking garage if necessary for the safety of public or to protect the county parking garage from damage. So that caveat was not in the original version. That was on the agenda. That has been added today, actually. And then, for the Red Lot, the city agrees to convey the Red Lot to the county with possession effective tomorrow. The Red Lot will be used by county employees, jurors, and others doing county business during county business hours, which are Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. That Red Lot will be available for public use any other time that's not Monday through Friday, 8 to 5:00. If the county ever wants to sell or otherwise transfer the Red Lot, the city has a right of first refusal to take ownership of the Red Lot at no cost to the city. The county will also maintain the Red Lot, and basically they will be the new owners of the parking lot and enforcers of the parking in that lot. There was also an additional term included for a private Logan Street real estate. This deals with some privately owned property that's near the Red Lot. It's not currently owned by the county. It is owned by private individuals. And should the county ever acquire that real estate, and they want to then sell that to somebody else, the city has a first right of refusal to purchase that property. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions?
Madam President?
Yes.
A year ago, when this came for us, then, I remember Steve Wood coming and giving us the elevations and showing it to us. And at that time, then, I know I asked, are we going to get the one floor during the days? Are they going to actually do that? And then are we going to do the nights and weekends? And because of that, then I voted for it. And now, with the new change that was made last night, I just, I feel very uncomfortable with this, with the new language that was made. I felt like we did have an agreement, and now with this language in here, I feel uncomfortable about it. I know of multiple businesses, especially one that is thinking about coming to Noblesville based on exactly those properties, parking lot spaces being right there. And I think that if they thought there was a chance they'd lose that, then they don't. I know that it says it's still in there, but I just don't feel comfortable with the possibility of taxpayers potentially losing all of those spots because of one future council's opinion that there was something there to change that. And that's basically, it sounds like all the council could just to come at one time, say any of those things could come up, and they could just close that. So based on that, I feel really uncomfortable. Now, we've got one member from the county council here, but I just feel really uncomfortable passing it with that because I feel like we'd be letting our citizens down who paid for the garage. They paid for the garage, and then they might be losing all of those spots, and those businesses are coming here based on those spots. So...
Yeah, understood.
Thank you, Mr. Voice. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Peterson?
I feel, I'll also kind of share councillor Voice's opinion that it does seem a little arbitrary or loose in the closing of the garage. I'm also kind of curious, it doesn't seem the county employees are parking at the Collin Lot now in proportion to how many parking spaces we're building for the garage. So again, if we, if that garage sits in proportion to what's there now, it's going to be 90% empty. And I'm just uncomfortable with, again, we're taking a lot of inventory off of the parking without kind of a plan. The ground's going to actually be used. During the day, in particular.
Any other comments? So I think that we need to amend what has been presented to us because of what was publicized to the public. So with this additional language that was added in there.
Would you like me to provide a red line for the clerk's office to put online after the meeting, just so it's clear what was added?
That would be terrific.
Okay. I will definitely do that.
So could I have a motion to amend the resolution RC-3-22 as what was presented today?
Yes, Madam President. Can, I would move that we amend resolution RC-3-22 as presented.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of amending resolution RC-3-22 as presented, raise your right hand. Three and four in favor of amending. Okay, those opposed?
I, I don't know. You guys were involved in that way before I was. I don't know what you're bringing up something that's kind of interesting.
So just to tell you, so you can make a decision on this. Basically, a year ago, then we said that we were, we made an agreement with the county, we being the entire... then we said that we were, we made an agreement with the county, we being the entire city, that we would give them the parking lot that is over to the north side, thank you very much, north side of the county judicial building, in order for them to, we were trading with them to the one, to the south side, because we knew of a developer that was going to come. And then they were going to build the parking garage, and because of that trade, then they're building the parking garage, and we would get one floor during the days, they were going to build it one floor higher than what they needed, and then on the weekends, they would get that floor, or we would also get that floor for anyone that were here, which was a great deal for everyone, I voted for it at the time. So, last night, the county council, and I hate to speak for people, but from what I know, last night, the county council met, and they felt uncomfortable because they were afraid that what if someone, there was vandalism, there was skateboarding, I remember was one of the things, or
Illicit activities.
Illicit activities, that type thing. Then they wanted the ability to close the parking garage down either to the public or on nights or weekends. If they would do that, then I feel like we would be losing our advantage from this, and we are, but I totally get that that was the only way they were going to pass it, so this may die without that, I don't know, and I hate that, because I think it's a good deal for everyone, but yet I also don't feel comfortable to the taxpayers putting that in there. So, you got my commentary, and you got it, if anyone else wants to add, they're more than welcome to, that was kind of my
What I'll do is I'll abstain, since I wasn't involved in all that, and then you guys go from there.
Madam President?
Mr. Boyce?
I have a question, being that there's still some uncertainty, is there a way we could postpone this, since this was kind of last minute, so we have a little bit more time to digest, maybe clarify some things, and revisit this when we have some more clarity and definition?
No, be fine with me.
Yeah, one option is certainly to table it.
Does that become an issue with transfer of ownership? Because I believe that the county is anticipating that they are taking ownership of that lot tomorrow.
Yeah, I can certainly contact their attorney in the morning and let them know that council is, if that is what you decide to do, has decided to table it, to discuss that additional caveat that they added in yesterday.
Since we have an amendment open, the other option would be that we would, it looks like this amendment is not going to pass, so then we would be forced, if we didn't postpone it, to vote on the prior amendment, and I think it would pass, I'm guessing?
The prior resolution would
The prior resolution without the new language would pass, and then it would be go back to the county, and if there was more negotiation, and they brought something different forward later on, they could have it, but if they wanted it like the agreement was made, they could have it tomorrow.
Yes, that's certainly an option as well, to pass the previous version.
I'm just giving other options.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea. So, the amendment has failed.
The amendment?
Well, we didn't vote on it.
We didn't vote on, well, we
You moved them in, and moved it from four to two to one.
Correct.
So, it's failed.
It failed, okay. I didn't, so did you formally abstain?
Yeah, I just did, because after he was explaining that, I wasn't involved in any of that stuff, so it wouldn't be proper in my mind that I would take one side or the other, because he raises some valid concerns, but, yeah, I abstained.
And I had forgotten about that they, the county had agreed to build
I didn't know that.
Additional floors
Oh, yes, right, yeah.
So that we had parking available for the merchants and the people coming into town.
I know of one large business that is coming here just because of that parking garage, and so if it got shut down, that would be horrible, that that business would pay a lot of money to do build out, and then, I get it, I mean, that's just my opinion, so.
So, would there be any detriment to any parties involved if we postponed this until the next meeting?
Well, or, I think going back to what Mr. Boyce said, is if we don't approve the amendment, we could review and approve the resolution as it stood as of 24 hours ago, or as of last Friday.
Yeah.
Which was in agreement with what we had talked with the county about previously.
Do you want to?
And approve that.
I'm not the president, so I shouldn't say that, but it's
Thank you. Mr. Schwartz?
We have a member of the county council here, do we?
You would like to
Not to put you on the spot, but
No, no, it's fine, I'm used to it. Thank you all. Before I get started, congratulations, Madam, for becoming the new president of Noblesville City Council. I'm not a county commissioner, so I don't get to vote on what happens at those meetings, but I do like the way you presented it. I cannot speak for the county commissioners, though, in any shape
Oh, was it a commissioner meeting?
It was the commissioners who approved, who added this language in.
Commissioners. Okay, I did not know that, thank you, I thought it was the council.
No, it was county commissioners, that was yesterday during the meeting.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yep.
No, that was my fault.
Did you?
You probably read it right, I just read it wrong.
For the record, did you say your name?
Steve Schwartz, County Council, newly elected president. Right. It's nice to meet you, sir.
Nice to meet you. Any other questions? While I'm up here, I would like to tell you all that if you ever need to contact me, open communication lines between me and the county council, please feel free to call, try to help any way I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Okay, so procedurally
Your first meeting, and there you go.
So, can we revert back to the original RC-3-22?
Or do we have to strike, since this is the one that's online?
No, it'll go back to the version
Okay.
Without the new language that was added yesterday by the county commissioners.
Okay.
And I'll make sure that red line gets to the clerk's office so that there's clarity as to what the old version was, and what the red line is.
And we'll get it worked out.
And the amendment could come back at a later date.
Right.
Right, yeah, thank you.
I mean, at the very least, if you pass the resolution without the amendment, we can take it back to the county, and they could always pass that, and they could adopt that version as well, or if there's maybe additional language that we need to work out with that, then we can certainly do that, have them pass it, bring it back here, and make sure it gets passed, and the Red Lot gets transferred.
Okay, so then, can I have a
Madam President?
Yes.
I would make a motion that, to approve RC-3-22 as it was originally presented last week without the proposed amendment from today.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution RC-3-22 as it was originally presented when this was added to the council's agenda. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
I'm gonna
Okay. So, six in favor, any against? One against, so six to one. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We will look forward to further conversations with the county if necessary. All right, that was fun. Moving on to transfers.
Welcome to the president.
That's right. Council to consider transfer TA-01-22 A through D, so there's actually four of these transfer resolutions, but I'm not going to read them all individually, but appropriation transfers in multiple funds for 2022 pay adjustments. Mr. Ferris?
Yes, thank you, council, and I think it's okay for me to discuss all of these as one package, since they're one item on the agenda, I don't know if they have to be introduced separately, but I think we're good. So, what this deals with is, as it says, pay adjustments for, starting in 2022, for city employees. As you may remember, the 2022 budget included funding for pay adjustments, however, most of that money was unallocated, so it was budgeted to non-departmental contingency until the completion of an analysis on city compensation levels, as well as negotiations between the administration and police and fire employee representation. So, all of that was completed in the fall, council's already acted on an updated salary ordinance that incorporates both the study and those negotiations. However, this is the fiscal action that will actually move money from non-departmental contingency into departments' budgets so that their budgets are square with how much they're paying people. So, the reason there's four separate resolutions here, A through D, is because we have four separate funds that are being impacted, that we pay payroll costs out of, the total cost is about $1,050,000. The budget had set aside $925,000 that was specifically for this action that you're seeing now in front of you, so there's about $130,000 that's uncovered. However, as you know, we budget for contingencies, so there's, in the general fund, for example, there's a little over $700,000 budgeted in non-departmental contingency, so we're essentially tapping into our regular contingency to cover the small difference here. So, because the compensation levels have been talked about at previous meetings, I'm not going to go too in depth on that, but if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Ferris? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve transfer TA-01-22 A through D.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve transfer TA-01-22 A through D, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero. Moving on to council to consider transfer TA-02-22, appropriation transfer for longevity pay adjustments for sworn public safety employees. Mr. Ferris?
Thank you, council members, this one has been separated out from the other resolution, but it also impacts pay rates for city employees. In this case, this is something that came out of our meet and confer negotiations with police and fire employee representation, and impacts the amount of longevity pay that employees that have been with the city for between 20 and 25 years are eligible for. So, right now, sworn police and fire employees cap out that $5,000 per year of what we call longevity pay after 20 years of employment with the city. This would make them eligible for an additional $250 per year in years 21 through 25, their new max would be $6,250. Obviously, this has an impact on how much we're paying employees that have been here for that long, but at the same time, it impacts the pension base for all sworn public safety employees. The pension base amount is determined by pay for first-class police officers and firefighters, as well as the maximum longevity pay that we are providing. So, essentially, what it's going to do is increase the amount that we're contributing to state pension funds every time we do payroll. So, the total cost here is about a little under $115,000, about half of that is direct pay, additional pay for people, and then the other half is increased retirement contributions. One quirk here, not to go too into the weeds, but one thing that we have been given the go-ahead to do by the State Board of Accounts is to reimburse the general fund for about half this cost. This gets a little weird, but we have two funds, both pension funds for employees that were, public safety employees that were hired before 1977, and so these funds have a cash balance of over $1.2 million in them. They're essentially pass-through funds at this point, where we receive money every year from the state and use those pass-through funds to pay these pension payments. And so what the State Board of Accounts has said we can do is tap into the cash balance of those funds to reimburse ourselves for the extra retirement contribution costs that we are incurring by making this policy change. So, plan is to kind of pay the general fund back to about $60,000 each year to cover a portion of this cost. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'll stop there.
Any questions?
I just wanted to say, I really appreciate, this is way down in the weeds, and appreciate all the hard work from the unions, and working with the Office of Finance to find this and help us cover some gaps we had in giving pay increases, and I know this was, a lot of work went into this, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. So, would you like to make a motion?
Oh, yeah, I'll move to approve, do you might have any other comments? I'll move to approve transfer TA-02-22.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve transfer TA-02-22, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero. Next item is council comments.
I have one.
Mr. Smith?
I would like to thank Jamie Yost for all the work that went into transforming the chamber, as most of the people that are watching online and everybody in here can see that this has changed a lot, our view up here has changed a lot, and anybody that's now presenting will have a better experience here, and it was a big undertaking, so I appreciate it.
You're here, absolutely.
Agreed. Anything else? Mr. Peterson, thank you again for your leadership in service last year as our council president, and I'm so glad that you had this be my first meeting today.
I'm sorry that my, your first meeting was, I was problem, but I appreciate, appreciate. Congratulations on being elected president.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Smith for
Yes, Mr. Smith is our vice president. Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. We are adjourned.